Evening, everyone. I apologize for the technical difficulties. I want to welcome you all to the regular meeting of Liquid City Council. It is Monday, November 18th. We're just a little bit after our scheduled start time of 7:30, but if you'll all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Anderson.
President.
Bullock.
Here.
George.
Here.
Litton.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Raider.
Yep.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held November 4th, 2019.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to dispose of the minutes without reading? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. And we do have a number of special guests joining us this evening for tonight's meeting relative to a special presentation that we have on the docket. So as is our custom, without objection, I would move that we move docket item number seven, the Keep Liquid Beautiful Home Awards, to the top of our docket this evening. Hearing no objection. Madam Clerk.
Item seven, Keep Liquid Beautiful Home Awards.
Thank you. And I believe we are joined by some members of Keep Liquid Beautiful and obviously the award recipients.
Good evening. Once again, thank you to City Council and to the administration for hosting the Keep Liquid Beautiful Home Awards, which you've done for the past several years. My name is Ruth Gillette. I'm a member of the Keep Liquid Beautiful Board. Keep Liquid Beautiful is a volunteer nonprofit organization that operates under the umbrella of the city of Lakewood. It was established by city ordinance in 1982. The purpose of KLB, as described in the ordinance, is to, quote, "promote civic involvement through public interest in the general improvement of the environment of Lakewood." The volunteer board initiates, plans, and coordinates programs for litter prevention, solid waste reduction, recycling, and green space beautification. To fulfill that purpose, the KLB board organizes an annual Earth Day cleanup event, hosts community meetings to promote composting and recycling, provides organizational and financial support for the tree committee, which is now its own advisory committee, partners with the city's Department of Public Works on beautifying small, scattered, publicly-owned areas throughout the city through the Adopt a Spot program, and specific to tonight's event, sponsors an annual beautiful home competition to identify and acknowledge beautiful homes throughout the city. The process works like this. Through the city's website, messages on the water bills, articles in local newspapers and word of mouth, the community is invited to nominate homes in the city that demonstrate homeowner pride of place and landscaping that really pops. From the nominations, one property from each of the seven city school districts is selected. And again, we've been convening the winners at City Council and making the awards, and we really appreciate your permitting us to do this. So as in previous years, we ask for Mayor Summers' assistance in congratulating the winning homeowners. And we have a PowerPoint that will show each of the homes as we read them off. So, without further ado, will you advance them or should I advance them?
You.
Oh, there we go. The first one is 17449 Norton. And when I read your name, if you could come up. Bruce Moss and Michael Schaefer. Mr. Moss believes that his home may be the oldest on Norton, having been built in 1912. The seed for Bruce's interest in gardening was planted early through an elementary school program and then encouraged by his father. Bruce's gardening advice, which I think applies to more than just gardening, is no matter how big or small your area, you can take the ordinary and with a little imagination, turn it into something extraordinary. Thank you, Bruce and Michael. At the end, we'll do a group picture. And then the band will come out. And the... Oh, no. So, the next picture. Whoops, that's not it. Yeah. How do I do that?
If you're able to, yeah, move the cursor up to next.
Oh, sure. Easy for you to... Okay. What do I do?
Can I get my glasses?
Yep. You see, he needs his glasses. It's not just me.
You can just click that.
That one, okay. 15710 Clifton Avenue, the Monday family, Amy and Dan. Amy and Dan have lived at 15710 Clifton Boulevard for over 30 years. The home was built in 1908, so started out with a coal-burning furnace and gaslight fixtures. It has beamed ceilings and leaded glass windows, and like its owners, have withstood many a storm off of Lake Erie. Both Amy and Dan grew up with parents who were vegetable and flower gardeners, so came by their knowledge organically, so to speak. Their advice is to have patience, water, and continue learning through trial and error. So, Amy and Dan?
Congratulations.
Whoops.
Thank you.
See, it didn't work. That was the left. It was the left. The other left. I'm sorry. I did do the left.
There we go.
Thank you.
No problem.
Let's see. So... So, 1032 Edgewater Drive, Cheryl and David Jerome. The Jerome's home is a mere teenager in terms of Lakewood housing stock. Having been built in 1987, it's only 34 years old. It was built on the site of a home previously owned by Captain Charles Hutchinson, a Great Lakes steamship magnate. David grew up helping his grandfather farm an acre of vegetables in La Grange, Ohio, and Cheryl focuses on annuals and patio pot gardening. The Jerome's encourage gardeners to develop a master plan as a basis that can then be modified and completed over time, and to use only locally grown trees and shrubs. So, thank you. Cheryl and David?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna try this this time. All right. 1584 Marlowe Avenue, Mariella Rauer and Don Kingsland. Mariella and Don have gardened at their home for 31 years, starting out with small efforts and becoming more ambitious as they experienced success. Family members who were gardeners encouraged and supported their interests. Don and Mariella's advice is to experiment with different colors and kinds of plants and to not be afraid to try something new. They echoed several other winners' comments that, quote, "Lakewood is a community of great front porches, a truly beautiful city." And they actually experienced myself and Carla Kowalski driving up and jumping out of the car while they were sitting on their porch to take a picture of their home. So, Mariella and Don, thank you.
Thanks.
2093 Arthur Avenue, Jack and Maureen Shrek. The Shreks have lived in their near-century home for almost 30 years, having moved in on their son's second birthday. As is often the case, the gardening seed was planted, growing up in families that were gardeners, and helping and learning from an early age. The Shreks' gardening advice is to be patient and be prepared to make a lot of mistakes, which is also applicable to many other aspects of life. So, thank you, Jack and Maureen. 1451 Clarence Avenue, Ray and Lynn Orsini. The Orsinis' home was built in 1903, making it one of the oldest homes on Clarence Avenue. Lynn credits her husband Ray for all the gardening effort. In Ray's words, "His gardening interest came from a simple desire to try to make the yard look better." This award confirms that he has succeeded admirably in meeting this objective. Ray's advice to others is to plan and get help and advice from the Lakewood Garden Center. Thank you.
And proverbially last but not least, 1520 Grace Avenue, Kevin and April Hoy. This home
is a mere 125 years old, having been built in 1894. And their son Rhett... I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce the most important gardener. April has been gardening here for 10 years. She learned her love of gardening from her grandmother, starting when she was very young. And in fact, her grandmother's peonies plants have been transplanted to Grace Avenue, bringing beauty to the Hoy's garden today. April's gardening advice is to plant flowers that bring you joy and to consult with Paul at Lakewood Garden Center. So, thank you. So, April and several other awardees mentioned that they felt honored to receive this acknowledgement. In April's words, quote, "Being recognized for something I love to do and that adds beauty to the world is really special to me." And I think that the KLB board members certainly appreciate and endorse that as well. So, thank you to all of you for all the work that you do to keep Lakewood beautiful. Thank you. I think we have a photo opportunity here.
Do you guys want to take a photo? Will you have to squeeze it in there, right? Is that where you want it?
Yeah, Nick, do you want to maybe hit...
Put it back to the 2019 winners?
If I can. No, I can't. I guess we're just gonna do it there.
You want to get in there?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah. So, KLB will sell you these pictures for... Oh, no, we won't. There, we'll get them to you somehow.
Let's hear it one more time for the KLB. And I'd really like to express our congratulations to all the winners this evening, as well as to Keep Liquid Beautiful board members for another great year of awards. I often say that this is one of my favorite meetings of the year, and this year was no different. This is a really fun meeting and a really great opportunity to see all the wonderful contributions that people are making to the Lakewood aesthetic and to our neighborhoods. So I just want to give a quick plug. Thanks again to everyone who is honored this year. And there are many ways to get involved in this wonderful process. That includes, if you're a real volunteer superstar, reaching out to KLB and getting involved with Keep Liquid Beautiful itself. You can also submit nominations for beautiful homes that you see throughout the city for next year's awards. Always fun to be on the lookout for that. And then, of course, you can participate by getting out into your own yard, back or front, and doing your own gardening and beautification. So thanks again to everyone for participating tonight. And again, congratulations to all involved. Thanks.
Thank you.
And we'll, of course, also understand if you wish to excuse yourselves this evening, although it is the budget, so you might want to stay.
Is there something for us?
Oh, yeah. I'll move to receive and file that report from KLB.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file? Yes, Councilman Bullock.
Well, just to add to your thanks, I'll say if we could get the report from Keep Liquid Beautiful, this presentation, I'd love to offer the sincerest form of flattery, which is imitation and copy some of these ideas from my own front yard, because I think it's good tips for homeowners and it's good beautification for the neighborhoods. Thanks.
I'm sure we can circulate the presentation and also potentially get it up on the city's website. And I also really enjoy the nuggets of advice from the gardeners as to how to be better next year. Any additional comments on the motion to receive and file? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes, and that brings us back to the top of our docket.
Item one, Public Safety Committee report regarding meeting held November 11th, 2019.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety Committee met on November 11 and considered two matters. One was the continued deliberation over the possibility of a scooter and bicycle share program through the Cuyahoga County contract. And the second was ordinance proposal ordinance 29-19 related to firearms. On the first matter, the committee reviewed a draft ordinance that had not been introduced at that time, but prepared by the Law Department and the administration to update our traffic code in various ways to give our public safety forces the authority to regulate scooters and e-bikes the same way that we would regulate any other vehicle on the streets. But because scooters and e-bikes are new vehicles, they don't meet the definitions of traditional vehicles and therefore fall outside the clear authority of public safety. So, to address that gap, the committee discussed and then agreed to a motion to recommend that the full council consider such an update to our traffic code and adopt it by the year's end. I believe we have a proposal on the docket tonight to that effect. In a nutshell, that's not all that revolutionary of a proposal at all. It's just, let's make sure our safety forces have the tools they need. Scooters can and do come onto Lakewood streets already because either people own them at home and use them, or they're visiting from Cleveland, where the scooter share stations are located, and then they can ride around and go where they want in Lakewood. And that motion was agreed to unanimously. The second item we considered was ordinance 29-19 to amend or repeal various sections of Lakewood codified ordinances that relate to firearms, and most specifically, that would regulate these key action verbs, owning, possessing, purchasing, transporting, storing, carrying, sale, transfer, manufacture, keeping, and reporting the loss or theft of firearms. And this is necessary because state government changed the state statutes, we're required to comply with those, at least if we want Lakewood police to be able to conduct their duties. Now, this does not affect the discharge or firing of firearms within the city. We still have our own rules and laws relating to that. But on that list of matters, the state law changed, so we have to come into compliance. We did clarify with the police captain in attendance that the police don't anticipate that these changes would really change their practical day-to-day conduct of police work, and they feel that they still have the tools they need to keep the public safe, which is important. So, the committee recommended adoption of this ordinance to the full council. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file?
Mr. Chair.
We'll have Councilman Raider and then Councilman O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, first, thank you to the safety director. I was able to attend the last meeting, and it was very pleased with the progress and the fact that you've recommended the piece of ordinance, piece of legislation that would allow for kind of a smooth transition of the discussion. I just want to underscore, you said it, I just want to underscore that passing this law just sort of makes us compliant with the city around us, which is mostly Cleveland. The law is matched. There's some differences, but it allows people to move seamlessly between the two cities for those sets of laws, but it does not authorize the contract and that we're not entering any kind of contract with a scooter dealership with the county yet. That's a further discussion. There'll be many more committees, at least one more committee hearing on that. So this is just the first step to kind of lay the groundwork for that potentially. I just wanted to make that super clear. And thank you again for leading that discussion, and all the members and the administration who helped the discussion to this point.
Thank you. Councilman O'Malley.
Councilman Raider took the win for my sales, so that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
No problem. Just as a point of order, then, I am looking to confirm with the chairman that the requested action this evening is for a referral of 4719 back to public safety. Or not back to, but to public safety for further discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Or Mr. President, rather. Or it could be considered on the floor. Maybe we could discuss it when we get to that point. But the committee is... Excuse me. You were referring to which? Not 29-19, but the new?
Correct.
The committee for the... I mean, we can discuss that further, but yes, it's not... In other words, the introduced ordinance tonight is only on the first reading. We had discussion of the unintroduced text in committee.
Okay, so just, yeah, not to beat a dead horse, but confirming my understanding, the text essentially has been recommended out of committee via the committee's previous discussions. However, it's on first reading tonight. Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. Any additional discussion on the motion to receive and file that Public Safety Committee report? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item two, communication from Director Sylvester regarding updates to the city traffic code to account for mobility devices and putting electric bicycles and scooters.
Director Sylvester.
Mr. Chair, I actually don't have the communication in front of me. My apologies.
Oh, I think it's up now.
Yeah, Mayor, I could take it. Thank you very much. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
Thanks. Dear councilmembers, over the past two months, we have worked with the Public Safety Committee to introduce and discuss our recommended two-phase approach to the countywide licensing system for bike, electronic bicycle, and electronic scooter-sharing operators. This letter serves as the culmination of our first-phase efforts with the committee to review and recommend updates to the city's traffic code to account and ensure the safe operation of these new devices. The county system has created a licensing framework and process for companies to provide bike, e-bike, and scooter devices for rent. It is guided by the goals of providing further opportunities for alternate forms of transportation for short trips, seeking to reduce local demand for car use and parking, and to expand the reach of public transit by bridging the first and last mile of daily commutes. As Cleveland has launched their share program under this county framework, Lakewood has begun to see these devices on our streets as riders use them to transit from Cleveland locations to popular local destinations. This letter accompanies the recommended legislation to add key definitions and update sections of our existing traffic code, chapters 301 and 373. Adoption of this legislation is critical to the near term to ensure the Lakewood Police Department is properly equipped to provide appropriate enforcement for these devices, whether privately owned or originating from the Cleveland Share Program. As this recommended legislation is considered by the whole of council, we intend to continue working with the committee towards the second phase of our approach, considering what a local share system under the county framework could look like in Lakewood, and determining whether it is favorable to move forward with a pilot or trial implementation period. We appreciate the cooperation and effort that has gone into producing this recommended legislation to address these devices, and look forward to continuing this discussion towards considering whether a local share program is right for Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
I'm looking ahead to the next item and want to discuss a potential motion. My suggestion would be that we would leave it on the floor because of what you referred to a moment ago. We do have time for the Public Safety Committee reserved on December 9 from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., so it could go there and come back out by December 16. That's also an option. But I was gonna offer to not take up committee time. In fact, I think that is better. If, for example, we thought that we needed to yield back the time currently reserved for the Public Safety Committee on that day, we could. If we just leave this on the floor and any, you know, at our next council meeting, we could deliberate and ask any questions. Would that be agreeable?
That sounds perfectly reasonable to me. Any other council members have strong thoughts or feelings on that proposal?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
I'm not... I'm indifferent as to whether we need another formal hearing on this, but, you know, I certainly would... There's a great deal of public interest in this issue, and so I certainly would hope that we would at least have it go for three readings and give the public the opportunity to review it and comment between now and then. So, thank you.
Sure. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of receiving and filing that communication from Director Sylvester, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item three, ordinance 4718 and ordinance amending or repealing various sections of the codified ordinances to allow for the regulation and distinction of electric bikes and electric scooters within the city.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to defer?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
Mr. President, rather. Last traffic comment from me regarding this topic. So, in agreement with Councilman O'Malley's point about public interest and the need for continued public comment, we can and will use the December 9 meeting of public safety, which is reserved for the scooters and e-bikes conversation for that purpose, but more specifically for do we want them in our community and what does success look like or not. And secondly, I understand that the planning department is working on a public meeting for this weekend that we may hear about tomorrow, so I anticipate that there will be several. I also heard from Lakewood Live merchants a little bit of feedback on this at a recent Lakewood Live board meeting, and that's of the nature of, we have narrow sidewalks, conventional bicycles are capable of hitting a pedestrian by surprise if we're not careful already. Let's be mindful of how we manage potential scooter traffic. So there is a lot of public input that needs to happen here, and I'll state for the record, my mind is entirely neutral at the moment. I want to do more research to understand the pros and the cons and how we might tailor a system for Lakewood before considering, do we want to move forward with that? So there's a lot to talk about. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion to defer?
Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President Anderson.
I certainly appreciate the opportunity to have further discussions. Some of the questions that I have, just trying to deal with, yeah, I appreciate the narrow sidewalks. It's under my impression that these vehicles, for lack of a better term, aren't intended to be used on sidewalks, but they're intended to be staged on sidewalks, but they're intended to be used in roads. And I also have a couple of questions specifically for the scooter manufacturers, and I've sort of tried to get some answers to this one particular question, which is what is to prevent the use of a scooter by a minor who just simply has a credit card and actually has a phone with an app? Want to make sure that if this is a motor vehicle and they're on the road, that there is actual opportunity to be insured and the opportunity for people of the public to possibly figure out a way to compensate themselves for any potential damage to their own property, should one of these scooters be used in a way that will lead to an accident, which, you know, bound to happen. So I think those are some of my bigger questions, and I look forward to having those. Again, what's to prevent a minor from using these who might not be insured? And even if there's an adult who has no insurance, then what is the ramifications? From what I understand of the scooter manufacturers is that it's completely the responsibility of the user, and they have to sign off on holding the manufacturer-manager responsible for any of these types of issues. It's all on the operator of the actual vehicle. So, those, again, are just some of the questions I have moving forward, but I certainly look forward to the 9th and other conversations offline as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Litton.
Just in response to that, I did, through our Public Safety Committee process, and thanks to our planning department, I believe, we were able to relatively easily get a few of the operators to come to our meeting and answer a host of questions, some of which were similar to the ones you just asked. So my hope would be that perhaps we could have some of those operators join us on the 9th, if that's where we're at with this, or beyond, because the discussion about bringing them more wholeheartedly to Lakewood will continue beyond the 9th, of course. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman George.
Thank you. No, I think I want to commend our planning department for, you know, taking the... you know, taking the first step, which is updating our traffic code, for, for possibly bringing these into our community. But I, I agree with the sentiment of their colleagues. There's a lot of research that we really need to do if we are going to get to the point of putting in a pilot program. You know, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure, a lot of things, so that's kind of where I'm at. We, we need a lot of public input, a lot of research before we move ahead, but I'm looking forward to those discussions.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to defer? Hearing none. All those in favor of deferring say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item four, ordinance twenty-nine nineteen, an ordinance amending or repealing various sections of the codified ordinances that regulate owning, possessing, purchasing, or other acquisition, transporting, storing, carrying, sale, or other transfer, manufacture, keeping, and reporting of loss or theft of firearms within the city.
Move to adapt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adopt? You'll recall from Chairman Bullock's report that this ordinance brings us into compliance with state law and was, I believe, recommended by the committee for adoption upon third reading, which is this evening.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
I'd welcome any comments from the mayor or the police chief along those lines that got reassurance from the captain that the day-to-day procedures of the police will be maintained in, in the same or much the same form, but the bottom line is that, you know, the police view this change as not reducing the ability of the police to appropriately manage firearms. Is that accurate? Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, what the councilman said.
Chief O'Malley.
So that, it's correct. It's, it's not going to affect the day-to-day operations. We'll be able to manage it, and bringing us into compliance with the O R C is what we're all about, so we have no issue with it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item five, Housing Committee Report Regarding Meeting Held November eleventh, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you. Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Committee indeed did meet on the evening of November eleven. We talked specifically about resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero-eight, which would provide an additional tool in our toolbox to advance affordable housing in new multifamily and mixed-use construction projects via the community reinvestment area. This was the first of, at a minimum, two hearings that we're going to have on this topic. The second is scheduled for five o'clock on December two. All members of the committee were present, as were members of the administration, most notably Director Sylvester. So there is a, a bit of history in regards to the use of the community reinvestment area going back a number of years here in Lakewood. So we talked a little bit about the history, again, of that particular tool. We also walked through the various components of our current affordable housing strategy, which has about seven current components. This potential component, again, is still being considered by the Housing Committee, but we look forward to having a, a conclusion on our deliberation after the December second hearing. So we'll look for a more complete report as to the recommendations or not on this resolution after December second. Move to receive and file, Mr. President.
Second. A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file that Housing Committee report? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item six, Finance Committee Report Regarding Meeting Held November eighteenth, twenty-nineteen.
Chairman O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met this evening and what was effectively the beginning of the budget hearing process. We discussed, we began with sort of an overview of what our process is going to be this year, which includes about thirteen hours' worth of hearings between now and December sixteenth, when hopefully we'll have a, a vote on the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget. We got an overview of the budget document and Budget one-oh-one from Director Pay, Mayor Summers, and Assistant Finance Director Schuster. We had a number of very good questions from council members and a good, a good beginning discussion for this hearing process. So the committee is scheduled to meet again on November twenty-fifth, next Monday, from six to eight, where we'll be discussing our community development block grant and emergency solution grant allocations. We'll be joined at that meeting by the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Commission, Lee Silves. We'll also be joined by Lakewood Alive to discuss their operations and have a discussion of the budget for the Planning and Development Department. That concludes my report.
Move to receive and file that Finance Committee report?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file that Finance Committee report? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item eight, Communication from Director Pay Regarding Twenty-Nineteen Year End and Twenty-Twenty Budget Ordinances.
Director Pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dear members of council, the following fifteen ordinances, need to change that, reflect appropriation, purchasing, and contracting authority and revenues necessary to finalize the two thousand nineteen budget and to implement the twenty-twenty budget. They support the contents of the twenty-twenty estimate of expense, otherwise known as the comprehensive budget document that was introduced at tonight's Finance Committee meeting. The ordinances are listed as follows. I will not read them. Please attach the legislation to the committee of the whole or Finance Department or Finance Committee for further review for passage before December thirty-first, not last year, two thousand nineteen. My apologies.
No problem.
Respectfully.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file that communication? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. And before we read the next docket item, as is our custom and as is necessary for us to adjourn prior to midnight, I will make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow for the consecutive reading of the aforementioned ordinances related to the budget, being docket items number nine through twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Anderson?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Litten?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Raider?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item nine, Ordinance Thirty-Nineteen, an ordinance to establish appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures in the city of Lakewood for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Item ten, Ordinance Thirty-One Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the transfer and advance of certain funds. Item eleven, Ordinance Thirty-Two Nineteen, an ordinance to establish appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Item twelve, Ordinance Thirty-Three Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, the director of public works, the director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to enter into contracts for professional services and advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of repair, maintenance, and operating supply services and equipment as authorized by the twenty-twenty appropriation ordinance and the Administrative Code of the city with the lowest and best bidder or bidders as otherwise provided by law. Item thirteen, Ordinance Thirty-Four Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, the director of public works, director of public safety, director of finance, and our purchasing manager to enter into service contracts in accordance with the Administrative Code for the Department of Planning and Development in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the specified amounts shown without separate resolution of council. Item fourteen, Ordinance Thirty-Five Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, the director of public works, the director of law, director of finance, and our purchasing manager to enter into contracts for memberships as authorized by the twenty-twenty appropriation ordinance and the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed ninety thousand dollars without separate ordinance of council. Item fifteen, Ordinance Thirty-Six Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the director of public works, director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city for street infrastructure improvements in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the specified amounts shown without separate resolution of council. Item sixteen, Ordinance Thirty-Seven Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the director of public works, director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city for wastewater system and treatment improvement program in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the specified amounts shown without separate resolution of council. Item seventeen, Ordinance Thirty-Eight Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, director of public works, director of law, director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city for the waste, for the water system replacement program in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the specified amounts shown without separate resolution of council. Item eighteen, Ordinance Thirty-Nine Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the director of public works, director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city of Lakewood for community development block grant, C D B G fund, infrastructure improvements in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the specified amounts shown without separate resolution of council. Item nineteen, Ordinance Forty-Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the director of public works, the director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code for the purchase of vehicles, machinery, and equipment in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city, contracts not to exceed the amount specified without separate resolution of council. Item twenty, Ordinance Forty-One Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the director of public works, director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city of Lakewood for building and facilities improvements in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the specified amount shown without separate resolution of council. Item twenty-one, Ordinance Forty-Two Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the director of public works, director of law, and our director of finance, or purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code of the city for traffic signs and signals in accordance with the Administrative Code, contracts not to exceed the amounts, the specified amounts shown without separate resolution of council. Item twenty-two, Ordinance Forty-Three Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, director of public works, director of law, and our finance director and purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code for parks and pools improvements in accordance with the code, contracts not to exceed the specified amount shown without separate resolution of council. Item twenty-three, Ordinance Forty-Four Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, director of public works, director of law, the director of finance, and our purchasing manager to advertise for bid and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder in accordance with the Administrative Code for the sidewalk improvement program in accordance with the code, contracts not to exceed the specified amount shown without separate resolution of council.
Thank you. And I think you're advancing on your moonlighting qualifications to be an auctioneer, but we just reviewed items nine through twenty-three. Under suspension of the rules, I will move that we refer items nine through twenty-three to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer to Finance Committee? Yes, Vice President Anderson.
Just for clarity, consumption of the community out there, our two thousand twenty proposed budget is broken down into fifteen bite-sized pieces. All fifteen need to be read three times normally, so by getting these on their first reading tonight, by our second scheduled meeting in December, if things get through the, the Finance Committee, they'll have their third reading upon our final plan approval of the two thousand twenty budget. So that's, just wanted to make sure folks understood that, if it wasn't already explained when I was reading something else. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion to collectively refer items nine through twenty-three to Finance Committee? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Litten?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Raider?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item twenty-four, Communication from Director Pay Regarding Section One Twenty-Nine Fifty-Four, Operational Cash Accounts.
Director Pay.
I can't see the light. Okay, I'm good. All right, this one.
Look like you're ready for press conference.
There we go. This one is a bit of housekeeping. Dear members of council, the Finance Department respectfully requests the amendment of Section One Twenty-Nine Point Five Four, Operational Cash Accounts. The changes requested in the Tax Department reflect changes in operations from Rita to in-house, and the reduction in Winterhurst is due to the city not longer operating that facility. So like I said, these are housekeeping, long overdue. Please place this ordinance on first reading and refer to the Finance Committee for further review. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-five, Ordinance Forty-Five Nineteen, an ordinance amending Section One Twenty-Nine Fifty-Four, Operational Cash Funds of the codified ordinances to comply with previous changes in the chapter.
Move to refer to Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer Ordinance Forty-Five Dash Nineteen to Finance Committee? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those opposed? There being none. That motion passes.
Item twenty-six, Communication from Director Yusefi Regarding a Revision to the Salary Ordinance.
Thank you. Director Yusefi.
City Council, I am submitting the attached revision to the salary ordinance for your approval to be effective on January first, two thousand twenty. Salaries have been updated to include a three percent increase in the salary bands based on the budget document. In addition, the Civil Service Commission has recommended the approval, for approval, the upgrading of two building department positions. Adoption of this ordinance revision remains consistency, maintains consistency with the contracts being negotiated and the civil service regulations. This annual update of the ordinance has been budgeted. Appreciate your assistance, respectfully.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to receive and file the communication?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
Director Yusefi, the, your letter states the, the revision would be effective on January first, two thousand twenty. The attached ordinance effectuates January retroactively to twenty nineteen, January first. Is there a, what's the correct date? Twenty-twenty? Okay. All right. We'll have to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would respectfully request that if we could have a, an updated version for the committee to consider. Hopefully, we can avoid more procedural hoops on the floor later.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman George.
Thank you. Do any of the salary bands reflect more than that three percent increase? No? Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving and filing say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. I'm sorry, that was the motion to refer to Finance Committee, was it not? Yes. Okay. That motion to refer to Finance Committee passes.
Item twenty-seven, Ordinance Forty-Six Nineteen, an ordinance to provide for creating positions and rates of pay for full-time and certain part-time annual salaried employees and hourly rate employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement in the several departments, divisions, and offices of the city, including the Chief of Fire, Chief of Police, and Civil Service Commissioners.
Wait. No, no. That was the motion to receive and file the communication. I will now move that we refer Ordinance Forty-Six Dash Nineteen to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer Ordinance Forty-Six Nineteen to Finance? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-eight, Liquor Permit Notice Regarding Fantasy Nightclub at One-One Eight-O-Two-Dash Fourteen, Detroit Avenue.
Thank you. As is our custom, we will defer to the councilperson in whose establishment the ward lie, or the, the councilperson whose ward the establishment lies. In this case, both docket items this evening are in Councilman O'Malley's ward, I believe, and I believe we are in receipt of reports on both. Councilman O'Malley.
Have no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to file without objection?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to file without objection? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes.
Item twenty-nine, Liquor Permit Notice Regarding the Symposium at One-One Seven Nine Four Dash Nine Six, Detroit Avenue.
Thank you, Councilman O'Malley.
Objection.
Thank you. Move to file without objection?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to file without objection? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. That brings us to the end of our docket this evening. I will now turn it over to the administration for any announcements.
Thank you, Council President O'Leary, members of council, members of the audience. I have two items I wanted to share with you, one of which is to remind you and our citizens that this is an annual time of year where folks have an opportunity to opt in or opt out of their utility provider. And as we know, that our, our primary source of, and default utility for both gas and electric is NOPEC. So I've been hoping that our citizens will continue to support NOPEC, which is an aggregator. They serve as basically a middleman accumulating bulk purchases, and they shop the market. a middleman accumulating bulk purchases and they shop the market, and as we know that they've created several options for our community including renewable sources that we're using here in City Hall, we also know that the benefits of having our citizens support NOPEC is a reinvestment by NOPEC in our community of, we know, several hundred thousands of dollars, in fact, probably at least six hundred thousand dollars that I can easily think of in the last several years with the chance of more to come. So when we have a chance through our various forms of communication to remind folks that NOPEC has really been pretty effective for our community, and I think it's competitive, their goal is really be a market rate provider, and I think they're able to do that, the markets are a little irregular these days, at any moment in time, there might be a cheaper option, but over the course of many years, I think NOPEC has proven to be very competitive and an advantage, and have, has been an advocate towards, I think, more effective energy policies. Tom, you were at their annual meeting, do you anything more do you want to share on that?
Sure, Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. President, I think, I think that's right, Mayor, first of all, I'm a double NOPEC subscriber, and I, if I recall, that gives fourteen dollars back to the city's grant program that we've used for LED light conversions, for the public charging infrastructure for the electric vehicles, and some other improvements, so please do that if you can likewise, but I think it is, it's, it's as cheap or the cheapest over the long term in the market. The game with retailers is to offer you a loss leader price for the first three months, and then they surprise you with a higher rate for the back end of the contract and a big penalty, so that some of these other competitors may have what appears to be a lower rate, but over time, I think NOPEC provides the best deal. We had some conversations, the beginning of conversations too, with NOPEC to figure out ways to make a hundred percent clean power the default option, right now it's fifty percent, which is an enormous step forward, a hundred percent's better, but fifty percent is nothing to sneeze at, so that's a live conversation, and we should, we should continue looking for ways to do that with, with NOPEC and really the whole region. They go all the way from Youngstown and Ash Tibula over to Tiffin, Ohio, and southwards to Columbiana County, it's a huge region, it's the oldest and largest in the country as aggregation goes, so it's a, it's a real asset to partner with our citizens, and I think it's, if we're going to achieve the goals that we laid out in the, in our recent hundred percent clean goal, we're going to need a partner such as NOPEC to get us there. The city can do the city's end, but for all the residents and businesses, we're going to need partners such as NOPEC to, to help us with all the rest. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll second item, as you know, we installed as a trial, two speed tables on Marlow between Franklin and Madison, and we did so with support of the neighbors, and we did so with a desire to address what we felt were some distracted driver issues, particularly at the intersection of Marlow and Franklin. Chief O'Malley indicates we have some initial data back in terms of traffic speeding, and I think you've become aware that one of the key traffic measures is the eighty-fifth percentile, and prior to the speed tables, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-two miles per hour, that means eighty-five percent of the cars went thirty-two miles per hour or slower. Subsequent to the installation of the speed tables, it's now twenty miles per hour. So one of the interesting questions is, two speed tables, one speed table, what makes sense, but we know they have a remarkable impact. I asked some of the neighbors recently any concerns about noise and other factors, and really, they, they don't seem to feel those are any issues to worry about, they did notice that folks had slowed down, I don't think they know those numbers, so we're soon going to tell them, of course. So I think the experimentation gives us a really good insight into behavior on a side street, and Chief O'Malley reminds us that it was about four thousand cars in the previous precondition of thirty-two miles per hour and a little less than that, three hundred, I think, post, so it's a, you know, representative volume, and it slowed traffic down. So we've got some data and some ideas to work with, so as you explore future issues on side street, I know Ward Councilmen in particular feel that complaint all the time, we'd have some options that we might want to consider.
Thank you, Councilman George.
Just remind me, those tables, do they need to be taken up for the snowplows in the winter?
Director Benno, I think we're going to leave them in this year, are we not going to give them a shot?
Really?
Yeah, we, we plan on leaving them in, there are signs next to them that say that there is something there, it'd be similar to when we have other obstructions in the road, like a utility excavation plate or something like that, so we'll just note it on the plow drivers' charts that there is something there.
Okay, thank you.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll see what happens, right?
They, they may be on Marlow north of Franklin.
Right, right, right.
But the other, the other thing that we should keep in mind, though, is that these are an intentionally temporary, you know, if we were going to actually put speed tables in, they would be different than this product that we've installed, is that correct?
Correct, if there was, if they were going to be permanent, it would just be paved in asphalt or concrete in that section.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President Anderson.
On that note, the initial iteration of the traffic calming devices on Woodward were temporary, and those ended up having to be replaced after every couple of winters, but we also showed a pretty immediate decrease in speed on Woodward, not as much as far as traffic goes, but speed did decrease on Woodward. So there we have two examples of two different types of speed calming devices that we've installed on a temporary basis, then we've been able to study the impact prior to the installation as well as post-installation, we've seen decrease in speeds in both instances, and so I think that's, that's good going forward. In addition, I believe that there are some mile-per-hour sign indicators on Arthur just south of Madison, and I know those have been impactful as well.
There's ten of those signs around the community now.
So, in fact, we had a guest here about a month ago who, who spoke about a couple of issues, and his father left his, his Browns hat, so, you know, with the help of Ms. Bach, I was able to identify the address, and I delivered it to him, and there's the sign like right across from their house, and they're outside just sort of pointing to it as cars coming up, come up and down their street, so they're proud of having a sign right there, a lot of kids on, on bikes, and I think neighbors appreciated having it there, so we, we have a lot of techniques at our disposal, and I'm glad that we're testing multiple, multiple options here, so thank you.
Thank you, any additional announcements from the administration? No, any announcements from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Litten.
Thank you, I, I wanted to use just a brief moment to first congratulate Councilman George on being Mayor-elect George. You know, I don't know that Lakewood shows its best self around election time, but no matter where we've been, where we're going is, is of the utmost importance, and I, and I hope everybody in this room can, can share some sense of unity moving forward as we work for the betterment of, of the citizens of Lakewood, anyone in Lakewood passing through or otherwise. Of course, Councilwoman-elect becoming, or Councilwoman George becoming Mayor George leaves a vacancy, and I know that's a, a bit of a topic, and I'm curious, I know by charter we're, we have a limited amount of time with which to make an appointment after the first of the year. My curiosity is if we can wholeheartedly announce and start accepting either cover letters and resumes or what have you now so as to hit the ground running after the first of the year with, with that appointment, if we're not being too premature in doing so.
Law Director Butler, care to give us an overview of that process, or, or by email shortly after the meeting, or?
I'm happy to just offer the overview right now, that's, thank you for the opportunity to respond. Assuming that Councilwoman George accepts the position of mayor starting January one, then it will leave a vacancy on City Council, she can't act in both roles, so it's perfectly fine for City Council now, the office of City Council right now to accept applications from folks interested in being appointed, should that position become vacant on January one, so there's no harm in doing that, there's certainly no illegality. I would, of course, suggest that council, this particular council, whose term ends at the end of the year, not deliberate yet on any, any applicants until the, the next council is formed, beginning on January one, but beyond that, perfectly okay for City Council to accept applications, thanks.
Thank you.
In the past, I'm, yes, Councilman Litten, has the, has it been that people submitted a resume and a cover letter, I, I've been a part of that process before, I believe that's what it was, but?
Sure, Law Director Butler, I know this is, there's variations, I think, between councils as to how this, somewhat as to how this process is proceeded, but?
My, I mean, this has happened more recently than this, but, but when my position became vacant, when Councilwoman, then Councilwoman Antonio's position, when those two positions were to become vacant, the council office began accepting, I guess, cover letters and resumes, I think that was the case, at the, towards the end of two thousand and ten, prior to those two positions opening up in two thousand and eleven, and then I think more recently than that, there have been vacancies that have been created, and I think typically it's a cover letter and resume.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President Anderson.
On this note, you know, I've received a few emails asking me to consider supporting a certain candidate to fill the, to be expected open council seat, and, you know, my response is, you know, current council is not going to be making the appointment to this unexpired term, unequivocal, there's no, there's no possibility, there's no process for the current council as iterated to be making that appointment effective, you know, we could, on, on January one, two thousand and twenty, is that, is that true? Thank you.
Thank you.
Another unrelated, unless someone wants to go on that point, I have a unrelated topic to bring up.
Councilman O'Malley, on a related note.
It is related, I, my recollection was that on or around January first, two thousand and eleven, that Councilman Nowlin and Councilman Juris were sworn in about five minutes after Mayor Summers was sworn into, from the Ward Three seat to the Mayor's seat, and so that process had played out in anticipation of those vacancies. I think a key difference there is that the entire rest of the council was, was staying on in that position, we are getting three new council members, it's a new council, it's a new council term, unlike January one, two thousand and eleven, so, you know, if we can get applications in, I have no objection to that, but beyond that, in terms of establishing the process and everything else, I just think in the interest of making sure that all the decision-makers are, are in the room for anything really substantive that we, that we wait, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Law Director Butler.
Thank you, I, I agree entirely with all of that, of course, if, if the, if the members of, of this council who are going to be members of the next council wish to gather to discuss that process now, I think that's perfectly acceptable, it probably would make sense to bring in the council members-elect into that discussion as well, that, that would be satisfactory, but, but you're absolutely right in drawing that distinction, and there was no change in council at that point, particular point, so all the remaining council members were to remain on, on council, thanks.
I would just note, not that you're suggesting otherwise, that that meeting would be publicly noticed naturally, and even if executive session were to then be called upon the commencement of the meeting. Okay, any additional discussion on that note, if not, Vice President Anderson has an announcement.
I just wanted to make sure folks knew to continue to bring in their, continue to bring their leaves to the curb, it looks as though we're about halfway through our oak leaf collection process on our curbs, and I'm assuming Director Benno, that things are going well, and we're still expecting leaf pickup through maybe the thirteenth or so of December of this year?
We collect as long as, you know, the leaves keep falling off of the trees, we can't control that, there's still, it's been good so far, but generally the oaks hold on to their leaves as long as possible, so sometimes it takes us until Christmas, you know, till the last leaves fall.
Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President Anderson.
So just to clarify, we're not collecting leaves after they're done falling from the trees, is that true?
Only after they fall.
Dave's looking for something for the, you know, those who are delaying the yard work, as, as I currently am, to inspire them to get them out there.
We luckily only got, you know, an inch or two of snow last week that, you know, was gone enough that I, I think we, we probably took one day off of collecting leaves and the crews were, were back out, you know, that, snow is usually the biggest delay, that we can't find them, and we don't know if it's a pile of snow or a pile of leaves on the curb, so.
And it's usually not, well, it's usually leaves, but sometimes you have the street cleaners out as well, so it's sort of a, a multiple discipline time of year.
Yeah.
Get these things before they get into our sewer system, et cetera, so, thank you.
No yard work procrastination. All right, any additional announcements, Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, this is going to go in the record books as an epic of announcements, so I have two thank yous and one announcement, the thank yous would be, and I missed it before, was to Director Pay and her team, it's a big bunch of work to get to today, which is to compile a, not only a budget book, but fifteen ordinances, so it's a little bit like taxis in, in reverse for Manager Chidok, but it's a helpful guiding document for all of us, and there's a lot packed in in terms of policy and controls and descriptions and reporting, and so we should know it, love it, get to put it under our pillows so it soaks in by osmosis, but that's a lot of work, and you've, you and your team have done it very competently for years, and, and we shouldn't take that for granted, so thank you for that, and please pass on our thanks to your team. Second, Director Benno was of great help, Councilman Litten and I have been working on trying to remove a pole not far from where the speed tables are, really for the same reason, and it was an epic effort of months to get First Energy and, and the others to do what they needed to do, and the secret sauce wasn't just John and I being a squeaky hinge, but the, Director Benno has a priority rolodex to call the right people at the utilities, and apparently one pole can have wires from eighty different companies, or at least five different companies, and so we finally got that done, so thanks for that. The third thing is to make an announcement, tomorrow in this room at noon is a meeting that Councilman Rader and I are co-hosting with a bunch of other communities, it's the inaugural meeting of a local, Northeast Ohio Local Government's Clean Energy Caucus, really kind of flowing organically out of the, the work that we've been doing, council members, and thank you for your support and the administration on all kinds of things, and all of you are invited, if you want to come, free lunch, I know Councilwoman George said she couldn't make it, I think the mayor's busy, but we will have thirty-seven different people here, twelve local governments from five counties, with representatives of four expert organizations and eight more citizens, that's a pretty good start. Council Clerk Bach put the word out on the deep state of local government, which is called the Northeast Ohio Clerks Association, and we got two or three people from that, and it's, so I look forward to this convening of really leadership from Lakewood, and we hope to get support and partnership from others, but join us if you can, and if not, this will be the first of several meetings, so, noon tomorrow, and I think a, a new business known as Ohio City Burritos is going to supply the food, thanks.
Great, thank you for that, are there any other announcements from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Anderson, sorry.
I'm right next to you.
Because I do have one, so I was confused, I was like, how do you know about my announcement?
I'm not reading over your shoulder, I promise, I'm just reminding folks, it's up on the screen, there is a City of Lakewood brick pickup from the old A-Wing Lakewood Hospital, November twenty-second, twenty-third, there at the Berea Road facility, so is there more details about what people might expect if they wanted to go and pick up some bricks? Is there a limit, is there, I'm just curious what, what this is, and how many bricks, and how many folks can be expected to walk away with some bricks?
Thanks, anyone care to speak to that question? Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, we're going to limit it to, to one brick per person, just to try to maintain getting them out to as many people as possible, I don't think we're going to be sticklers about it, so a couple bricks probably isn't that big of a deal. We got two truckloads of the original A-Wing at the refuse facility, so spread the word, and I think Glenn and Marilyn at the refuse department could use any of your help, if you're open to come and helping us hand out bricks on Friday or Saturday.
If you're open to come and helping us hand out bricks on Friday or Saturday, that would be awesome.
Thank you. Any additional announcements from council? Okay, so my announcement is just a simple housekeeping matter for council members. As you'll all recall, our docket deadlines are the Wednesday prior to a council meeting. As it happens, our next docket deadline falls on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Although that item is set in the code, I would ask that we all, by agreement here and now, acknowledge that we will self-impose a docket deadline of Tuesday evening instead of the Wednesday evening prior to Thanksgiving for the sanity of certainly our own council office staff, but also members of the administration as well that are involved in drafting legislation, and avoid a, a jam-up relative to the holiday that puts people in an uncomfortable familial situation any more than they already are at Thanksgiving. So unless there's any objection, I'll assume that we're good to go with a Tuesday evening docket deadline next week for our final meeting in, I'm sorry, for our first meeting in December, rather. All right, any other business? Hearing none, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes, we are adjourned. Thanks again.